Good evening. I would like to call to order this Anoka Hennepin School Board meeting for today, August 25th, 2025. Please join the board in pledging our allegiance.
Pledging our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the British Empire in relation under the Constitution of the Civil Rights of Independence.
All right, our first order of business is to approve the board agenda. Is there a motion to approve the board agenda as presented? Thank you Director Wangenfeld. Do we have a second? Thank you Director Adet. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. With six in favor and zero opposed, the agenda is approved. Members, the next item on our agenda is our item four consent agenda. As normal, members can remove items for separate consideration and discussion if that's their desire. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you Director Simon. Is there a second? Thank you Director Shane. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. With six in favor and zero opposed, our consent agenda is approved. Our next agenda item is item five, the communications delegations and petition section of our meeting. This is time for the community members to provide input directly to the school board about issues that fall within the school board's authority. We plan this agenda item for 15 minutes. Our policy allows for community members to speak for up to five minutes, but if there are several persons that we want to speak, the chair has the discretion to reduce the time to comment, to hear from all, and also to keep the meeting on schedule. During times of large community input, we have been flexible in allowing the meeting to run late. Tonight we have, I believe it is four. We have four cards. To keep the meeting on time, I'll ask individuals to keep their comments to four minutes. I'll ask co-chair to Shane to monitor a timer, and if you run over your time, she will ask you to wrap up your comments quickly. We welcome written testimony if you have more to say than time allows. Please complete a yellow card and provide it to Ms. Ball so that we can provide a written follow-up. A couple of procedural reminders. Our meeting participation procedures are in place to ensure open and orderly public comments as well as to protect the due process and privacy rights of individuals under the law. If speakers use specific names of students, staff, or board members, I'll need to interrupt or stop the speaker. Please remember to direct your comments to the school board chair. Members of the audience, please listen respectfully. If the board cannot hear speakers, I may reset the timer to allow speakers to be heard. Audience members that disrupt this portion may be asked to leave for the remainder of the meeting. And with all of that being said, our first speaker is Abby Pear. Welcome to the board.
Good evening Board and Superintendent McIntyre. My name is Abby Pear, and I'd like to talk to you tonight about two things. The first being direct instruction and the second, supporting our teachers and staff. I have spent the last two decades in education, first as a teacher in our district, and now as a professor in higher education, training our new teachers. As I listened to the board's work session earlier this month, it was clear there was some confusion around what direct instruction is, which is understandable since most people don't spend their day jobs thinking about curriculum and instruction. But since I do, I hope to provide some clarification that might make it easier to make good decisions regarding approving the social studies and science standards that the Anoka Hennepin staff members are waiting for. I'll start with what you're understanding really well. You are correct that direct instruction is very important and that there are good reasons why we are adopting direct systematic explicit instruction for foundational reading. One of my jobs is I research dyslexia with a team at the University of Minnesota. And through FMRI scans, we literally can see that during the reading acquisition period, which means during the time when you are building those neural networks, like think emergent readers, preschoolers, kindergartners, first, second graders. A child literally is changing their brain and building those neural networks that connect the speech and the print. Our brains need that repeated multiple exposures to effectively do the statistical learning that it takes to crack the code of English, which is really complex. Research from the cognitive neuroscience, educational psychology, and education fields have recently combined that knowledge into what you know as the science of reading. And the board has shown a strong grasp on that. A focus of that research is that the direct instruction makes the patterns more obvious for students and helps them crack that code of English really fast and efficiently. So that's important. And I thank you for adopting the new curricula that are really aligned with that research. However, just because one concept is solid in one area doesn't mean you can extend it across other areas. And at the last work session, it was clear that some board members would like to extend those findings to secondary students. Secondary science and social studies in particular. It is true that we would all love to see higher achievement on standardized test scores, but we don't actually have clear evidence that mandating that teachers spend 30 of every 60 minutes in direct instruction in those grades will improve outcomes. We don't find that. We find mixed evidence across the studies. There are amazing differences between the brains of young children who are just acquiring reading and high school and middle school students. High school and middle school students are not just empty vessels waiting for the teacher to pour knowledge in. That's not how it works. Instead, they're learning new knowledge by connecting what they've already stored in their schema. Because of this, teachers know that when beginning a new unit, we should be beginning by assessing what students already know on the topic and what we should build from. Most importantly, what misconception do students already have? For example, if my social studies students think that the end of slavery and Martin Luther King Jr. and the civil rights were in the same era, this tells me I need to do some teaching. They have some misconceptions. That era actually arose because of continued injustices.
Ten seconds.
And so we have to take this into consideration when we're determining how we speak. And our teachers know how to do this. That's really what we're training them in in higher education, is how to determine what they need. I will leave you with the call to put yourself in the perspective of teachers. The vast majority who agree that the state standards need to be adopted so that they can use their new textbooks. Our teachers are experts, and we have to, especially as we're starting this new school year, treat them as such. Welcome them in. Let them know we're excited to give them the tools that the board is supposed to so that they can do their jobs well. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Our next speaker is Tim Jess. Welcome to the board.
Good evening Board and Superintendent McIntyre. My name is Tim Jess. I am here on behalf of the Building Service Employees Group for Buildings and Grounds, which represents maintenance, custodial staff, grounds, and the warehouse. I'm a third generation employee of the district. My grandfather's worked in the district. Both of my parents have both worked in the district and have retired from the district. The one thing that I took from this when I first came into this district is that this is a career. You know, this was a career option for a lot of young people that they can do. But with the rising costs in health insurance and, you know, or not sustainable wage increases that we are seeing, it has become unsustainable for people to maintain this work. We already have individuals that are quitting right now because of the health insurance. We had one Friday that just quit in the maintenance department. And we don't want to have to experience another shortage that we did after COVID. With 30 some employees not wanting to work, and we're all struggling to try and maintain these buildings, which are vital to the students and the rest of the staff and the community itself. The fields, gyms, the classrooms, it's all very important to everybody and it's important to our job. So, you know, we just want to implore the board to consider increasing the wages and health insurance contributions that the district has, to try and retain these employees that are currently here and to make it feasible for them to want to stay here longer than a few years, to be more of a career. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Our next speaker is Kelly Stalbig. Welcome to the board.
Thank you. Good evening Chair and members of the board. My name is Kelly Stalbig, and I am a proud member, or proud mother of a senior football student athlete in the Anoka Hennepin School District at Andover High School. Thank you for the work you do and for the time you give to support our schools and our kids. I'd like to share my perspective regarding the recent decision to move high school football start times from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Friday nights. For decades, Friday night lights has been more than just a football game. They are a tradition that brings entire communities together: students, parents, alumni, teachers, and local businesses. It's one of the few times during the week when thousands of people gather to celebrate our schools and our kids. Starting games at 6:00 PM risks shrinking that tradition. Many working parents work until 5:00 or later, and a 6:00 PM kickoff makes it harder for families and community members to attend. The result is fewer people in the stands and a weaker sense of community spirit. Here in Andover, we've seen just how strong that community spirit is. The Andover Football Association consistently has one of the highest youth football registrations amongst Anoka Hennepin, if not in the state of Minnesota, with more than 400 youth players. That's an incredibly high participation rate, especially considering the city's smaller population. Football is deeply woven into the fabric of this community, and Friday night lights are where those young players dream of one day taking the field. But most importantly, this decision impacts the students who are playing right now. These athletes have worked their whole lives for the chance to play under the lights on a Friday night. For seniors especially, this is the culmination of years of dedication. Early mornings, long practices, and countless sacrifices. Playing at 7:00 PM in front of a full stadium is an experience they will remember forever. Moving games earlier takes away part of that moment. I respectfully ask the board to reconsider and allow Friday night football to continue at 7:00 PM. In closing, I want to emphasize that this is about more than football. It's about community. It's about honoring the tradition that inspires younger kids, unites families, and gives our students the high school experience they deserve. Please keep the tradition of Friday night lights alive in Anoka Hennepin. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you for the comments. Our next speaker is Preston Nelson. Welcome to the board.
Good evening everyone. The last speaker did a great job of covering kind of what I want to cover, so I'm going to keep it quick. Just go over a brief overview again of why, as a representative of Champlin Park and their football team, why we would really like to have the game start time moved back to 7:00 PM. My first reason is because many of our players on the team come from working-class families, and their parents might have to take off work or get to the game later due to the change in start time from 6:00 to 7:00. Also, as someone who has played varsity, when we have to get prepared for an away game, at school, we're coming off of school lunch and maybe some snacks, but that was probably like a few hours before. If we have to play at 6:00, we won't really have that much time to get prepared and get a good meal in before we play at 6:00 now. And if that was moved to 7:00, I feel it would be definitely a lot safer because we could get a good meal in our body and some good fluids to hydrate us. My third reason is that playing at 6:00 for the first couple of weeks of games would be majority at daytime, and majority at daytime, and we had changed schedule game due to weather, and it was during the day, but we had like a rise in cramps and heat strokes and people that just had to be taken out due to the heat. I think kind of to piggyback on the safety thing, a game at seven, that would not happen as much due to the heat, just not being there, it would obviously just leave because the game is at seven now. But as well as that, we also have a huge youth team, and as a youth member myself, or I'm sorry, I'm not a youth anymore, but as a previous youth member myself, the Friday Night Games were just electric, and it really made me fall in love with the sport. And I do remember that my game, my practices would get done at 6:00 PM, and I'm not sure if they would change that, but due to the vast number of teams, I think that they would probably not be able to change it, and they would be getting to the games late. So I think that would be very hard for some of the teams that would have to practice till then. And I'm just going to make an assumption here that maybe you guys changed it down to six due to like some violence maybe, or some people of the community acting out. And I would just like to say that maybe there could be some other ways that we could try and limit that. I, me personally, I think that if that stuff is going to happen, I think changing the game time back would not do as much. I think that there could be something done inside the game that would help, to help limit the crime and violence. But just to end, and just an ending thought, growing up, I hear playing under the lights and Friday nights a lot, and the, just under the lights and playing at night is just means something special. If you're, like I said, last year I had to play varsity, and I got to play under the lights, and it was definitely like just a crazy experience. And for my new teammates coming up, I would hate for them to have to miss out on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rod Kuhn. Welcome to the board.
Good evening. Conservatives consistently bring up the Marxist origins of CRT as if it's unforgivably heinous. So let's look at a few of the actions through American history. Marxists are stalwarts in the fight for full civil rights for Black Americans. Conservatives opposed integrating Little Rock schools by waving placards that read, "Race mixing is communism." Marxists are deeply associated with racial justice. The last murder by a Marxist was in 1973. Far-right groups have killed 520 since 1990. The Communist Manifesto was written during the early Industrial Revolution, when workers were virtual slaves. Marxists supported multiracial unions and safe working conditions. Marxists opposed the wars against the Native Americans, the Vietnamese, the Iraqis, and the Israeli genocide against the Palestinians. American Marxists have consistently opposed atrocities that Republicans and Democrats are so fond of, and therein lies the problem. Marxists are demonized because they adamantly oppose white supremacy and oligarchy. CRT is attacked because it decisively documents the techniques used to enforce white supremacy. It turns out that our nation's real allegiance is to profit and power, not to justice, not to the Constitution, and certainly not to Jesus' message of "love your neighbor." But the serious velfication is reserved for teaching the insights of CRT in our schools. CRT exposes our nation's lethal embrace of savage racism throughout our history. Detractors know that our young people will recognize our behavior for what it is, an ongoing moral atrocity, and that is a threat to traditional values. One final note, neither the gratuitous cruelty of the conservatives nor the colorless of the liberals can build society. A society runs on honesty powered by an open curiosity about other perspectives, integrity, and an aggressive concern for the welfare of all its people. This is the goal of SELDEI CRT. It works off the principle of "love your neighbor" and is most clearly practiced by American Marxists. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. And our final speaker is Brandon Finkie. Apologies if I misread that. Welcome to the board.
Thank you guys for having me here, as well as my teammates as well. I don't really have a new dog in this fight, but I want to touch on some other things that a couple of other people have said. One of those being that a lot of us come from working-class families, and it does become a lot harder for them to get to the games as, you know, they get off of work before five o'clock, and then for them to get to those away games, especially like for Champlin Park, we play Lakeville North, and that's a fifty-minute drive for us. So I can imagine for parents who work in further locations, it becomes, once again, much harder for them to get to the games on time and to see their kids play. And also for me, as a senior, I wasn't fortunate enough to really play under the lights last year for varsity, so that would hurt me to have to go and change the tradition from seven to six. And that would really pain me, and I know for some of the upcoming juniors or sophomores who are playing up, that would really hurt them as well. And then, I can also understand one of the reasons for wanting to change the time from seven to six, which may be the fighting the student sections or surrounding the games in the community, because, you know, it's later at night and kids are, might be acting up, but I don't think it's fair to punish the, the people who are playing on the field or who actually care about the sport and the environment of the sport for a couple knuckleheads that may be in attendance. And there's definitely other ways to prevent that, maybe by having a stronger presence of some authority figures, or what I know some schools do is make sure it's only students in attendance before the games. And that's really all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Looks like we got one more speaker. Colton Miller. Welcome to the board.
Hey, guys. I just want to talk about how, you know, we're moving, pushing back the 6:00 PM games, and I just wanted to, just kind of wanted to make sure that you guys know, like, it's, you guys probably know, it's like always been tradition for us to play at seven, and like, you know, all my friends know it's at seven, so it's kind of just like, it makes it more difficult to get to these games for everybody. Like, my parents get off work at five, and they gotta drive an hour to get home, so it just makes it harder for them to get to these games and, you know, just like all that stuff like that. And I also just want you guys to be aware, just like, even though you know that these kids cause trouble at these games, like it's, like the other dude said, it's just tough to punish guys like us. So, I didn't really have as much to say as him, but that's all I just wanted to say, is you guys know. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you for the comments. And with that, there are no more speakers, so our next agenda item is Item Six, Board Calendar and District Update by Superintendent McIntyre.
All right, thank you, Coach Chair Arco, and good evening, members of the board. As people are exiting here, we'll give them just a moment. Appreciate everyone coming out. Lots of energy leading up to the start of the school year, so we thank everyone for As I kind of set this up, as I usually share with the board, tonight I'll be presenting some items that are of the board interest and community interest regarding activities and events that we're proud of in our district. We do this to celebrate our students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to effectively educate each of our students for success. So to start things off, we've been preparing here about the last month with staff gradually coming back. And over the past three years, our district has endorsed a theme called "The Power of Purpose," with the realization that creating human contact and human connection is a powerful conduit for student learning. So when staff show up at their best, we can get the best from our students. And our schools are all about our people, with, as we've talked often about our budget, really, you know, is really about the eighty percent of that budget being our staff, and how do we continue to bring our best staff forward to our student learning? So last week and this week, we started last week with about two hundred and eighty new teachers that came for their first day on the job. We met with about three hundred and fifty child nutrition workers, welcomed them back. We had about four hundred transportation staff together and welcomed them back, with all staff returning this week. So we are back in full force today with getting ready for the start of next school year. So, we're using that "Power of Purpose" theme to really have a shared focus on bringing our best to do our best for our students. And that first day of school, as I move on to our next announcement here, next Tuesday, September 2nd, is our first day of school. It is finally here, and we will start with a phased approach with students' grades one through five, and grades six and nine, as well as grade seven at Anoka Middle School for the Arts, starting on Tuesday, and then all other grades starting on September 3rd. Kindergarten students will also begin in this phased approach throughout the week. So we will see increased activity at all of our school sites with open house events starting tomorrow at our elementary and high schools, elementary schools and high schools, and then our middle schools, along with Two Rivers Transition Program at Franklin on Wednesday night this week, August 27th. So, one other note I want to make, you've probably seen in some of the updates that I've been sharing with the board each week, our enrollment is looking to be up. We're, we're at least holding, and our, right now, our projections seem to be increasing. So, as we inch towards the beginning of next week, and as we kind of move to that October 1, which is our official count that we use for funding, we'll continue to keep you apprised of that, but all signs are looking like increased enrollment is happening. So we're excited for that. As you heard tonight from some of our student athletes, our high school activities are already up and running, and we've already had a number of competitions that have started. And this fall, we offer a full slate of options, whether it's dance line, marching band, cheer, we have girls swimming and diving, girls volleyball, girls tennis, cross-country soccer and football, along with a number of other activities, and many more will get started once school starts as well, those activities and clubs that are offered once the year has begun. So we do encourage students and parents to reach out to our activities offices at our buildings to find out more about registration, as well as future opportunities that we offer our students. One more reminder as well that tickets to activities, events are now digital and are available on our school websites. I also wanted to talk again, we've done this a couple of times in the last couple of meetings, but parents and guardians should continue to look for back-to-school information on our district website at ahschools.us/bts for a listing of information and links to help navigate maybe some of those last-minute things as we're preparing for the start of the school year. So, open house dates, supply lists, and many more elements are located online to help everyone be ready to go for the start of next week. So it's a bit short and sweet this, this month, but Director, our Coach Chair Arco, this concludes my superintendent's report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Board members, are there any questions for the superintendent? Director Simon?
Thanks, Zach. Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. A question on, the questions we received tonight about football starting earlier, I know that information has been shared with the board about that decision and why that decision was made. I, I think, I don't know if there's confusion, or there's certainly concern out there, I'm just curious if you could send that back to the board, kind of refresh us on that, and then the board can have discussions. And then, maybe a follow-up also is, is it, it sounds like other schools have maybe done this also, so if away games, I mean, we don't control their schedules, we control our schedule, I would guess, but maybe just some background information behind that on, is this something that can still be changed, if, why or why not? I just think it'd be great to get really transparent and clear information out to our communities, so.
Yeah, I can answer that right now. The games start this Thursday, so I doubt those can be moved, but across our north division, not just our school district, so that includes Rogers, Centennial, Osseo, others in the six A Metro North Division, all move their games to 6:00 PM, primarily due to the safety concerns and our ability to honestly cover those with staffing and with law enforcement availability. So, and that's just beyond, I would also tell you just from my experience with the High School League, that is happening in other areas of the metro as well. I can also share that what has been, for other school districts that have made this change before, there actually has been increased attendance and increased ticket sales, so increased revenue as well. So, historically, we have, I mean, we have modified games with players that did a great job seeing, you know, when we've had weather or other things or other game stoppages, we've had to move some unique games, kind of isolated events around. MEA breaks, another good example, we have to work around certain breaks. But this has been a bit of a trend moving to 6:00 PM. And then I also just like to point out, our other fall sports, so if 6:00 PM is a challenge, we do, we have many other sports that start earlier. So, five o'clock or even four o'clock, of the other sports I listed, whether it's soccer or tennis or swimming and diving, even the wintertime, teams do travel for events with a five o'clock start in different parts of the metro or across the state. So those travel times are just, you know, we have to manage those kind of challenges to make sure we can get in those JV and varsity games regardless of the sport. But those are, those are the key elements, I can, you know, I'll follow up again with our ADs to give you some more details, because I, I would like to make sure I have that accurate with all the districts in our north division, but that whole north division has made that adjustment and has scheduled the games for, for six o'clock kickoffs.
Thank you. Off the cuff there, very nice. And I know you've shared that information before, I guess just maybe you can follow up with this. So was that a, like a conference decision, or I'm not sure what the terminology would be, or is it up to individual districts? So, you know, football may be different than those other sports that it was always Friday Night Lights, right? I mean, it's been that way in, not just Minnesota, the United States for, forever. So, I just, at least for me individually, I just, I, I would like to revisit it as a board member.
Yeah, the ADs make those decisions with the other school districts in the conferences are, have not historically been school board decisions, and the entire Metro North Division made that decision together. It's kind of that part of the High School League regional group, those ADs meet every, nearly every month or every other month. I, I remember sitting as the superintendent rep when I was in a previous district, and that would have been nearly five years ago. The neighboring district, Anasio, moved those game times as well a number of years ago. But those are some decisions that were made, because, look at also official availability and, and just the travel of the visiting teams and those things. So it was kind of made as a regional decision, but I'll, I'll follow up to see if there's any more data beyond that, just even beyond our region, right? That'd probably be helpful for the board to know as well. So I'll have more probably as early as tomorrow.
Any other thoughts or comments from board members? Director Arco?
Just, just that I think it's worth a review as well.
I concur. See a lot of nods here. All right, well, any other comments? Otherwise, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is Finance, Item 7A, the Phase Three Budget Reduction and Reallocations Timeline. Welcome again, Superintendent McIntyre.
Yeah, thank you, Coach Chair Arco. So tonight, board members, is, is simply a review of the timeline for our Phase Three Budget reductions. This is not anything more than just reviewing of that series of calendar dates so that our public is familiar that this process, as we've talked about in the past, is, is starting back up. And in your materials is a copy of the timeline itself, it's just kind of that infographic which is up on the screen, very similar to our Phase Two process that we went through last year. And just by way of brief review, we went through a Phase One identification of about $5 million reductions in March of 2024, and then we went through Phase Two of $9 million reductions that the board decided on last November. So at the time, our target was about $26 million, and we knew we would have the remainder to, to settle up with as this year moved forward, knowing that we would have the legislative session and, and some time to reset that target if we need to. So, as you saw in June, at the last time we talked about the budget, that number was at that point estimated to be 15.6 million for this Phase Three process. We will be having more conversations this week with board members to give you more information around that, and some of the work that has been done to organize the information as we begin the process. I do want to point out that over the summer here, as it shows in the timeline, leading up to this point here in August, we have begun a series of meetings with our school leaders, our principals. We've already had a number of those meetings here to take advantage of the summer months to get prepared for getting all that information gathered to eventually share recommendations with the board. So we're still in that process, still, I know you've heard Michelle Vargas talk often about, we're still settling up last year's budget, which will help us about, we're still settling up last year's budget, which will help us reset and update that target for us, and you'll get more information soon on that as we continue to finalize last year's finalization of that annual budget. So as you look forward on the timeline here, we hope to bring forward some recommendations after conversations with the board, bringing those to the work session on September 8th, which is right around the corner as we kick off the school year, and then refining that as necessary for a review of those recommendations at the September Board Meeting on the 22nd. That leaves us then time to go out to have our community meetings between the end of September and the beginning of October, make any adjustments from those meetings and surveys that we, information we collect through surveys, and bring that back to the board in October for a revision if necessary, leaving one more month for the board in November to make their final decision at the November meeting on the 24th. That allows us then to make planning decisions and all the necessary operational changes ahead of the January staffing process that we've talked a lot about, to make sure we continue to be on time with our hiring process and do our best at recruitment and retention of staff. So very similar timeline, wanted to make sure we cut that out publicly, so people know that that's coming, and we'll, I know as I'm looking at Jim and Heather on our communications table, we'll be pushing that information on our website, I know they have that queued up and ready to go as well. So tonight is simply a review of the dates. We're right now in the middle of collecting the information that we need to bring to the board, and we'll again have some of those conversations this week with members of our team. So with that, it's just again a general review of that basic process timeline.
Thank you Superintendent McIntyre. Board members, any questions? Director Langenfeld?
Thank you for that process and update and putting it out there so clearly. Quick question, as we think collectively, I know we're going to have separate meetings, when will we have a collective meeting to really have some shared conversation about the reductions and which work session? I'm just trying to calendar in my head and time-wise.
Thanks for asking. Yeah, that'd be September 8th.
Okay, so it is September. Okay, that sounds good.
I would say that, just as a kind of a side note, that'll be our primary topic that evening. We'll also have an elementary and secondary literacy update as we're implementing our new program at the elementary level, give updates, but that, those will be our two topics for that work session, knowing that there's a lot to cover.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Director DeShane?
Just to thank you for prioritizing the community meetings again, and I just want to confirm that those will be at all five high schools?
This year, they will be at middle schools.
At middle schools, okay, but in all the five clusters?
Right.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And I know, I'm looking again at Jim and Heather, they're, we're in the middle of getting ready to post that information as well too, that'll be coming shortly.
Any other comments from board members? All right, hearing none. Thank you for the update Superintendent McIntyre. The next item on the agenda, we have General Counsel with our first, Item 8A, 524.0 Acceptable Use Policy, First Read. Welcome Tim Palmetier, General Counsel, and Jill Borman, Executive Director of Technology.
Thank you Co-Chair Arco, School Board Members, and Superintendent McIntyre. I'll start with our policy 524 Acceptable Use Policy. We will have two policies on tonight. I'll ask Ms. Borman to hang with us when we talk about the acceptable use policy and if there's any questions, and then I'll move into some minor changes to the bullying policy. So policy 524 is a district acceptable use policy. What we are proposing tonight is a rewrite of the current policy 524.2. The current policy was last revised in July of 2012. This policy is required under federal law to qualify for the federally created E-Rate Program, which affords discounted rates for schools, public schools and libraries. The rewritten policy essentially maintains a number of the acceptable and prohibited uses for district technology found in the current policy. However, we're proposing actually a rewrite, in part because the policy was dated, also in part because the policy was really not as robust and comprehensive as the MSBA policy. So the rewritten policy to just kind of highlight some of the areas where there's some differences and nuanced differences between the current, what we're, the current policy and what we're proposing. The rewritten policy provides substantially greater detail on unacceptable uses. It incorporates stricter parameters around sharing of private information. It specifically includes prohibition against social media on school district servers to post personal information about the user and others. It addresses staff and student responsibilities to report and guard against inadvertent access and disclosures of unacceptable materials or private information. It addresses reporting obligations concerning malware and phishing schemes. It provides policy-level guidance on the use of internet filtering activity that Ms. Borman could fill you in, at least in terms of some additional details. It includes an important disclaimer on users' limited expectations of privacy in the use of district technology. It includes a disclaimer notifying users that the district will not be held responsible for certain losses or damages that a user might experience when using district technology. It includes parent, notice to parents that they are ultimately responsibility for monitoring student use in district technologies. I think that the really maybe most significant changes, though, really come in some of the, some of these areas. In 2022, there was a change to the Minnesota statute that dealt with the requirement for schools to provide notice to parents of technology providers that it utilizes, and also makes available contracts that we have with these technology providers. So the cut, the new policy incorporates those particular components. It also incorporates statutory changes from 2022 that restrict the authority of school officials to access certain, access and monitor certain uses with respect to student technology. So for example, in the statute in 2022, there were restrictions placed on schools with respect to geo-tracking of devices. You can do it under limited circumstances if there's a lost or stolen device, or searching internet search histories. You can do that in certain instances where you're maybe investigating bullying or harassment, but it has narrowed down the possibility in those respects. Finally, the policy includes a statutory provision from 2021, which expressly directs schools to limit individual use of electronic screen time for pre-K and K students. So after discussion at its meeting on August 4th, 2025, the policy committee recommended moving the rewritten policy forward for first reading tonight, at tonight's meeting. So I'll take any questions with that.
Any questions from board members? Director Adet?
Thanks. I'm looking at Section 5 Unacceptable Uses, and I'm wondering about specifically the under 1A through, let's see, we, I mean, at face value, that stuff is, I don't know, you might think kind of obvious, but how, I guess I'm looking for how we define some of these terms or the material itself, and how will we, what's the word I want to use? Synchronize it with other policy in the district, so that we can have common language for what these things mean.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a specific term that you're, that you're actually looking at. It's always kind of a hazard of drafting policy, sometimes the language is not going to be as specific. We actually implemented an acceptable use policy that really incorporates a lot of these things, such as obscene materials, materials which are harmful to minors, those types of things, lewd, vulgar, rude, those kind of things are, have been managed reasonably well. So I know that sometimes at face value it can seem a little bit vague, but our administrators really are used to kind of managing those types of terms and really seeing specific scenarios and how they might violate those expectations from the board. But with that said, I mean, this is a board policy, so if there is a desire for a greater specificity, we can certainly do that. I'm happy to attempt it.
Yeah, I think it would be useful, and then like I say, to look for other instances or policies where we, where we talk about, try to pull all that language together so we don't have conflict in our policy or in our practice for how we're enforcing standards like that.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Simon?
Thanks, Zach. Thank you for this. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to explain this well, but under 2 General Statement of Policy, second sentence, it talks about, I like that it talks about the faculty and they'll blend thoughtful use of school district computer system. I like that part. But as I think about, I guess, the present and the future of technology in education, right, and the sciences or the studies that we're getting that maybe limitation of that, not just in lower grades but older grades, may be more effective in education, and then also with AI, right, specifically with writing in English classes and things like that. I wonder, this, this just says you're going to thoughtfully blend it throughout the curriculum. There may be instances that our district, the board, whatever, say, you know what, we're going to start limiting this because of AI, or something like that. So I wonder if you just want to tweak that sentence to say that matching the district's strategic direction on this, or something along those lines, so it doesn't, we don't, we don't date this policy before it even starts. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but I foresee a trend in that in the future of maybe limiting technology and specific things for kids potentially, so.
Thank you, Director Simon. I will actually point out that Co-Chair Arco actually did bring up the question about AI as well. And unfortunately, I mean, it's really hard to even know where to find the answer and where to draw the lines. We know that when you do a simple Google search, you're, you're interacting with AI. And so I will tell you that I struggle with trying to find a way to even incorporate it. I went back to the MSBA policy and just gravitated towards that. I think you're right. I think we're going to, we're going to know and learn a lot more in not just the coming years, but in the coming months. And if there's a, so you think about AI and you think about acceptable and appropriate uses for AI, that we use it in our work and we use it in research and we use it in all components of the way that we navigate the world, and we want students to experience that too. On the other hand, we don't want them to use it for academic impropriety and that type of thing. So I agree with you, I struggle to find where that might be. I know that, you know, we could continue to work with our technology people, also our educators though, in terms of how that's going to influence pedagogy, so.
Yeah, so maybe I wasn't clear. I'm not suggesting you put anything about AI in this policy. What I'm suggesting is that if everyone agrees or thinks it's valuable, that we change that sentence, second sentence into a general statement of policy, just to say that it's going to be, we expect it's going to be thoughtfully blended throughout curriculum in accordance with the district's direction on technology, something like that, as opposed to just open-ended of, right now, I could read this and say, as a teacher, I need to blend this throughout every, all the curriculum I do. And that may not be the case. Specifically, our, by the way, our English teachers do a wonderful job with AI right now. They have means of knowing if a student uses AI in writing. They also have gone away from technology in some cases and do writing in class, handwriting in class, writing samples. So they've already come up with strategies, but I just want to make sure our policy reflects that.
Okay, thanks. Maybe AI was a trigger word for me, I don't know.
Any other comments from board members? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Tim and Jill. So our next item is Item 8B, 514.0 Bullying Prohibition Policy, First Read, Mr. Palmetier.
Thank you Co-Chair Arco, School Board Members, and Superintendent McIntyre. The next policy for our consideration is the Policy 514, our Bullying Prohibition Policy. This policy has been in effect since 2006 and was last revised in 2016. It is a policy that is specifically required by the Minnesota Safe and Supportive Schools Act. In the most recent legislative session, there was a little tweak to the Safe and Supportive Schools Act that really addressed, it was a very slight change, and it really caused us to at least look at this policy in the first instance. So it really addressed the right of parents to designate another person who could receive information if their child was involved in a bullying incident. It's an odd little change that was made in the statute, I'm not sure what drove it. But in looking at this policy and bringing it forward to a change, I will note that we saw, at least I saw, discrepancy between district policy definition of bullying and the statutory definition. And from my vantage point, that's problematic. If we have a statutory definition of bullying, I think it's important that we stay very closely to the statutory definition. So specifically, there were, at least in the definition of bullying, the current version that we have in our policy talks about things such as aggressive behaviors constituting potentially bullying, putting those little provisions in there. The anti-bullying statute actually addresses all forms of bullying, so to be aggressive is not really required. A lot of times, we have very passive bullying that can be taken place virtually, for example. So essentially, the significant change that's proposed here is just taking our policy and incorporating the statutory definition of bullying. It's pretty clear, I think it removes ambiguity. So that is the essential recommendation, maybe a little bit of removal of some redundancy with respect to the statute in terms of consequences for violation as well. I noted that there was, that in two different parts of the policy, we talked about the consequences for violation of the policy. So those are essential change, the essential changes for the anti-bullying policy. With that, I'll take any questions.
Director Adet?
Thanks, with respect to the statutory definitions you talked about?
Yes.
Are those, are those directly here? And is there a reason? So we've, I don't know where we've landed on this, but in the past, I know myself, I have a preference where it is a statutory definition, just to reference it, because it's, number one, it's clear, it refers back to the law, and I think it helps to just signal where we drew the language from. And, you know, four years from now, when we look at it again, people like you will know, but the average person might not, so could that be added value there?
Yeah, I think it, I think it could be. I think it does help to reference, and there are times when you'll probably see in our policy, we'll just reference generally back to statute. I would suggest, at least in the, in the definition, you know, because parents come and look at our policies too, and they want to know, was my child bullied? So they want to understand that bullying can include these parts of the statutory definition. So if the suggestion is to actually cross-reference the statute and then provide the example, I think that that's a very good idea, and we could actually incorporate those pieces.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, just reference the statute that applies and, you know, you could, it's pretty clear then where that came from.
Okay.
Director Simon?
I agree with that, first of all. Second of all, under Roman numeral 2, letter F, number 2, it talks about what might be considered when deciding on, you know, consequences, I guess, in general. And number 2 says the levels of harm. My question is, does that also, does that incorporate the victims' emotions, feelings towards it? Like, I think of a specific incident, if a victim does not feel safe because they've had bullying, would that be considered in what the student who bullied them, you know, sometimes if a student is expelled from a school, they might return to a different school, for example. So I'm just curious about, levels of harm could be something that the district decides. We believe that these, this is the definition of harm. At least I would like it to be a partnership with the victim also about what harm means, if that makes sense. It gets a little vague, but I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but I want to make sure if anyone else agrees that that part is included.
Thank you. I think impact is, is always part of the calculation. Bullying, at least in my involvement in these types of issues. in my involvement in these types of issues, a lot of times, they can be very complicated, right? So there's, and perception can drive a lot of it. Perception can really matter a lot for some students, too. Some students are going to be, are going to be much more sensitive to things, and it might impact their educational outcomes. And so I think that this, this policy is, as it's modified, and frankly, as it was previously in place, at least in terms of those factors, kind of accounts for those things. And I know our administrators really, you know, try hard to account for all those. But with that said, I don't know if the suggestion is, Director Simon, to say, levels of harm, particularly as it impacts the victims of bullying, or something to that effect. But I'm trying, where, I'm open to suggestions. Because this, one thing I will say is that that particular thing on the factors, that actually I just pulled forward from the prior version of the policy. It seemed like it was useful for our administrators. But a good tweak is something that I would entertain.
So I'm only one board member. I would personally like that. I'm not sure if others agree. I think that I agree with the sentiment of leaving policies where you're not handcuffing yourself for the future, but I also think that it's, it's what's the board's intent of what we want admin to do also, right? So at least, I would suggest that.
Director McIntyre?
I appreciate those comments, knowing that children have varied interpretation of how they're being bullied. I mean, and for me, levels of harm, I've seen everything from, you know, she's really bothering me every day, to I can't come to school anymore. And so those considerations, I think, need to be really serious. I mean, there are some really serious impacts on children with bullying. So the question is, the level of severity, you know, in terms of how it's interfering with that child's ability to come to school or that child's ability to build relationships. Those are the kinds of things that I know our administrators are taking into account. But then the question is, okay, then what? You know, in terms of where they respond? You know, is it serious enough that that student can't be, that student who is causing the harm is given an op, you know what I mean? I just really think that's important to have. Some, a level of harm can be physical, but the emotional harm often is far worse for kids in a bullying situation. So I don't know how we can, I don't know if there's similar to when people report harassment and those kinds of things, if there's a reporting structure where they can evaluate that level. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think it's, I actually think that our harassment investigation process kind of provides a pretty good model.
Right.
Provide different levels of.
Yeah.
And so maybe a framework for how our administrators look at a particular act, that could be useful, and maybe even something that we could, I mean, I could work with our principals in charge of discipline, who actually get engaged in these types of things, and maybe even talk about this in terms of kind of a grid that we've put together. I think what's interesting, and all of you all know this, I mean, we deal with very low-level bullying instances, a simple act of name-calling in the lunch line.
Right.
That's dealt with immediately, and our administrators and teachers are great at doing that. When they see something, they do something. Up to what you're talking about, daily kind of barrage of name-calling, physical acts towards a student, which change and create a different level of investigation as well. But putting those in tiers, I think, could be a, perhaps, a useful process for us.
I think that might, I would think that would be helpful as an administrator, to have that information, and to be able to just follow a process and really make sure that the children are safe and supported.
Director Hoffman?
Yeah, clearly ensuring that kids are safe and comfortable in school, that they're ready to be there to work, and that all classmates are working together to make that a positive environment, is number one priority. When I read a bullying, this bullying policy, it's just so hard to clarify exactly how that's going to look and how we do work with students to make certain that the class environment is safe. As I read this, it just, I'll be interested to see some of these suggestions that have been offered to ensure that the language is clear, so that there can be consistency, and make certain that, that all of our kids are being protected. I guess some things that stand out are just things like a perceived, you know, I guess I'm trying to understand how an administrator looks at this and how they check off all the things to know if this counts as bullying, or it's maybe something else. Things just are, does there have to be an imbalance of power and it has to be mean? Like, does that make sense to you as I'm reading through this? Or does it have to be, you know, and interferes with the educational experience? I'm trying to see how many of these things have to be present before an administrator would look at a situation and say, yes, this is an indication that the bullying is happening here, versus it's not. Like you said, maybe it was just a comment, like, your shoes are ugly, and it's just passing in one day.
Yeah, and I think even that, that's a good example of, I mean, that might be bullying, and if taken in the aggregate, it might be even more problematic for that, for that student. So the, I think the one thing that the statute does, it goes to this whole notion, so you have the, you have the classic bullying situation, where there is a direct power imbalance, maybe between a freshman and a senior, maybe between a disabled student and another student. And there's that actual power imbalance, and there's that kind of lording over the other student, and that certainly, and then there's a kind of pattern or repeated engagement. And the one you're talking about, too, then gets towards material and substantial disruption, which actually is kind of like, how many, we, sometimes when we, when we experience small slights during the school day, and I think this policy actually, and the statute affords administrators discretion in being able to kind of draw those lines. It's hard, it's hard to flush it out in so much detail, because I think, you know, you as a teacher and administrators that you work with, they, they kind of, they know where the lines are drawn. I don't see it begging out for greater clarity. Ray Brodeur couldn't be here with me today, but I think, when we've talked about this, too, it's, I mean, I think there's a sense that even though there's some, there's some language here that lacks a certain amount of specificity, they're able to draw lines pretty well. But I certainly, you know, the, this is a board policy, so to the extent that there are suggestions to be, to provide greater specificity, certainly, I would listen to those. And, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Do you have anything else you were going to say?
I, no, I was going to wait for your comment, and then I was going to, I was going to wrap up with my understanding of where maybe I'm going to make a couple tweaks with the, with the board's kind of consensus here.
I was just going to restate something I said at the policy committee meeting. Section three definitions, and then, oh, no, wait, I lost it. Yeah, okay. Section three, number one. It says there's an actual or perceived imbalance of power between the student engaging in prohibited conduct. I just pointed out that anything can be perceived as something, so that term, while important, I get the idea it's trying to capture, it's vague and kind of opens the policy up to quite literally anything. So if there's any way to, like, shore that up or make that maybe a little more specific, that would be useful in my mind, but not a deal breaker.
Okay.
Superintendent McIntyre?
Although if it's, if that's a statutory definition.
Yeah. It just is what it is.
Well, I, yeah, not, not it is what it is, but it's, it's what's in the law. So it's kind of useful, at least, in trying to have it there.
I think what might help the board is that, the second read, we could have some of our leaders come in and talk about it, because I think what might be missing here a bit is investigative process. They are collecting information, evidence, facts in each allegation, and then you have to apply these to what are the set of facts for each incident. Some can be consistent, others, so it really depends on the facts of each incident. And yes, I love how people said, we're trying to be consistent, so that that investigation process, once an allegation's made, some are verified, others are not, right? So I think it might be helpful for you to hear from some of our leaders on how they go through that process, and how we're trying to make that a consistent thing throughout the levels, across the buildings, and how we do that piece, and how they apply what's in writing here. So that could happen. That could be helpful for a second read.
If I might, I think, I think the observation, first of all, I agree with Director Adet as it relates to the language of the statute. But I think it's also, I do understand the concern raised in the question by Co-Chair Arco, and that is basically, a perception is kind of, we teeter between the objective and the subjective. And blatant subjective perceptions of things are not necessarily what this, this policy is intended to address. And so if we were, I could even envision a scenario where I could, I could add language that would talk about perceptions are those, are those that are reasonable, a reasonable person would reasonably perceive, something to that effect. I don't want to, I wouldn't recommend changing the specific language, but it's always fine to provide clarity, and that's the board's providence in these areas. So can I maybe make a, at least what I'm hearing today, and I could come back with this for second read, also including what Superintendent McIntyre said, I think we'd come back to the policy and reference the statute, and when we're defining bullying, consistent with Minnesota statute, referencing the statute, and then provide the definition of bullying, consistent with what Director Adet said. Looking at changing, when we talk about levels of harm, adding language, something particularly as experienced by the target of the bullying seems to be, there's maybe some interest around that. And then perhaps even putting in something that provides a little color around what it means to perceive, or reasonably perceive, I could, I could add some modifying language. I can make those changes if there's, if there's some coalition around those ideas.
Seems reasonable to me. Director Simon?
I agree. I had one last question.
Good. I thought you were going to say, I don't agree.
No, I agree.
All right.
I believe that, I believe that Anoka Hanipin investigates, regardless of its perception or not, any, any report of bullying, we do an investigation, I would guess.
Right.
I'm just curious, is that state statute that you have to? You may not know that, but could you bring that back?
It, well, I would say that it is, it is state statute. But the question of investigation is the nuance thing, right? So if you, if you accuse me of bullying, and Cory McIntyre investigates that, it might be a pretty quick, little response. It might be talking to two people or one person really quickly and addressing it immediately. So yes, there is investigation if bullying occurs. It's just, how serious was that? And it's kind of a sliding scale in terms of how detailed that is.
Of course.
So I think that's correct.
Okay.
All right. Well, any other thoughts or comments from board members? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Palmetier.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is a labor relations update, item 9A. Welcome, Dr. Cherry, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good evening, Board. Co-Chair Arco, Members of the Board, and Superintendent McIntyre. Glad to be here this evening to talk about labor relations and provide an update for the Board and the community. We provide these labor relations updates at each one of our school board meetings. Again, this is in alignment with Policy 209, our Negotiations Code of Ethics, that indicates that we will do so. And a note that any detailed negotiation discussions, negotiation strategy sessions are held in closed sessions with the Board. So at this time, I would like to give you an overview of our employee group, some background information. Anoka Hanipin has 18 different employee groups. Five of those groups are unaffiliated. We call them policy groups, and 13 of those groups have collective bargaining agreements. We do have one group, our community school coordinators, that has already agreed upon a master agreement for 2527. And we have several groups with 24 through 2026 master agreements. And we have a series that have master agreements in place for the term from 2023 through June of 2025, June 30th of 2025. These are all the open groups, and the groups at the bottom there, you'll see, are the ones that I'm going to be talking about mostly this evening. So next, we will go to these groups, one by one, with the open contracts, starting with the ones that we have met with already and begun negotiations. So looking at our open contracts, our building service employees are represented by SEIU, Local 284. This group of employees is made up of our custodians, our maintenance, warehouse, and grounds employees. And they have just under 200 employees in this group. We have met seven times, and at this time, we have come to a place where we've needed some additional help. With Bureau of Mediation Services assistance, we will meet next in mediation. That means that our negotiation meetings at this time will be closed to just the negotiators from the district and from the employee group. And we will have two mediators that have been assigned to us by BMS, or the Bureau of Mediation Services. We will meet with them in September. The next group that's been very active is our teachers. Our teachers include our K-12 teachers, as well as our adult basic education, early childhood family education, and now, most recently, our preschool teachers are also being added to this group. They are represented by Anoka Hanipin Education Minnesota, Local 7007. In this group, we have just about 3,200 teachers. We have met three times so far. Our last meeting was on August 18th. We are making significant progress, but unfortunately, we have not come to an agreement, tentative agreement yet. Our next meeting is on September 4th. Looking forward next month, actually, in just a couple of weeks now, we have meetings scheduled, first meeting scheduled with two additional groups. Both are represented by Minnesota School Employees Association. The first one is our child nutrition assistants or our cafeteria employees. We have just over 200 employees in this group, and we'll meet with them for the first time on September 9th. The next group is our technical specialists. This is a small group, about 14 employees. The majority of these employees are housed at our district office, and our first meeting with this group is on September 10th. Moving forward, we do have four additional groups that we have yet to schedule, but we have heard from some of these. They would like to get meetings scheduled, but it's just the series and how many open groups that we can, we can really process at one time. So our other open groups, the four, are our community school programmers and early childhood screeners. This is a small group of nine employees. Typically, we don't meet with this group until after we have come to a tentative agreement with teachers, because they are also represented by Education Minnesota. Our principals group is represented by Anoka Hanipin Elementary and Secondary Principals Association. There's just over 125 employees in this group. We are actively trying to find a date for our first meeting. Our school office supervisors are represented by the Anoka Hanipin Office Professional Supervisors Association, 42 employees in this group. Association, forty-two employees in this group. And our special education administrators, we have fifteen special education administrators right now, and they are represented by the Anoka Hanipin Special Education Program Supervisors Association. So as you can see, we've been quite busy in labor relations, and meeting and, and negotiation with these employee groups. We will continue to provide updates to the school board at upcoming business meetings, and update our website as well. And at this time, I'm open to any comments or questions from the Board.
Any questions from board members? All right, well, hearing none, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you, Board.
All right, we are nearing our last board agenda item. Item ten, Board Correspondence and Communications. Members, this is your opportunity to share happenings in your community, report on committee assignments, or other items of interest. Does anyone have anything to share? Director Deshane?
Thank you. I just want to say that I had the chance to attend the marching band showcase, which features all five of our district's traditional high schools' marching band programs. It was a wonderful opportunity to see all the hard work that students have been putting in over the summer marching season, and into the field show segment of their performances. So great job to all of the schools. It was really fun to watch.
Thank you. I was very happy to see, when I sat down this evening, that you have paperwork from the Minnesota School Board Association regarding the delegate assembly. Elections will be this year, they're every two years. You served for two years on, as a delegate, and I know Coach Arco was able to attend as a delegate last year, and I really encourage our participation. There's a testimonial from St. Anthony School Board Member, who talked about the fact that they actually brought forward a resolution, and that resolution is, is the resolution that passed through the legislature, that affords us, as board members, the ability to attend meetings virtually. And that was not just by happenstance that that occurred, but it came through St. Anthony District, and then came through the delegate assembly, and was supported by that as well. So that's one area. It's got, I sent an email, you should have all received it from me last Friday, I'm sure you were waiting for it. But at the same time, at the same time, the QR code for the delegate assembly information, so you don't even have to search for it if you're interested, and again, I highly encourage our representation. The other piece of that is the resolutions that school boards put forward, and it's the collective voice of an individual school board, or several school boards often have the same issues that they're lifting up. I know that last year, one of the, probably that one of the most hotly debated issues was, in fact, regarding the suspension of K-three students. That particular item did pass the delegate assembly, and it is still on the books for the Minnesota School Board Association. So I would expect that that will be lifted up again. I don't know, Superintendent McIntyre, where we are at with our, our resolutions, our platform that we'll bring forward, and when that'll come, because that, I would assume, we need to do that together as well, you know, at the same time. If we were to lift up a resolution that is not already in the MSBA platform.
Right, yeah, your board sets your, your platform in the fall, and approves that in the, for the holidays, so in January usually, December or Jan, sometimes December.
Because they're looking for resolutions now, but I think it's important that the one that we really want some movement on is still in the books, and it did pass, so I'll put that out there. Just something else, I had the privilege to attend in my grandmother role this year. As a former middle school principal, and someone who would welcome sixth graders every year to my school, one of the things is that our students experience high anxiety, often, when they first make those transitions. I have to give a shout-out to the district and former board members, maybe Director Simon, you were even part of those decisions, to have sixth graders and ninth graders come on their own day, and kinders come separately. And then what, what Jackson Middle School offers also is an opportunity where kids can come in and have their pictures, and their, and their, they call it Passport Day, I believe, and, and it affords all kids, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the opportunity to do some of those pre-thinking, and, and just delay some of those fears. But what I appreciated most was how well it was organized and orchestrated, so that when students come now for open house this week, they'll already have their schedules in hand, their pictures taken. And I did have a chat with the lunch lady, who didn't get the usual business that we used to have in the past, just to see how things were going there, in terms of, we used to have kids also sign up and, and pay for their lunch ahead of time. So anyway, it was really well-done, and I saw a lot of smiles, and a lot of great, positive energy, and the staff and the administration should be complimented, and I would guess the same kind of opportunities will be at all of our middle schools, as they welcome students on that first day as well, with web and so forth. So, thanks.
Any other comments from board members? All right. The next, item eleven, will be conducted in closed session. The executive session will be closed to discuss labor negotiations pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh-three, to discuss matters with all open groups. The closed session will be held in the Michael Sullivan Room. I will entertain a motion to move to closed session.
So move.
Thank you, Director Simon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Langenfeld. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, will all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed, say no. With six in favor and zero opposed, we will move to executive session in the Michael Sullivan Room, and we will take a five-minute break. The meeting is recessed at seven fifty-two PM.